I now call this special meeting of the Conroe Independent School District to order. The time is 4:02. It is Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. A quorum of the board is present and this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. The first item on the agenda is our invocation that will be led by Trustee May and Trustee Horton will lead us in the pledges.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for bringing us all here today. Thank you so much for the beginning of school. We're all anxious and excited to welcome the kids back in. Lord, just take care of all of the staff members and everybody that works in our district. Take good care of our families as they get their kiddos ready for school. Get our kids ready, Lord, and just give them peace about coming to school. Give them joy about coming to school. I pray a special prayer over our new facilities that are getting ready to open up and for those teams that will be welcoming students for the first time. And, Lord, thank you for all that you do for our district. We are so grateful. I pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you both. We are going to go on to Agenda Item 2, Discussion and Take Action and the Naming of the Executive Director for Communications. Dr. Landry?
Thank you, Madam President. It is my privilege to be able to recommend the candidate for Executive Director of Communications for us. Candidate has been with the district for about eight years now, but has well over a decade of commercial and school experience in communications and has been a dedicated, very trusted member of our team. And it is my privilege to be able to recommend Andrew Stewart to be our next Executive Director of Communications.
Thank you, Dr. Landry. Any discussion? Okay, all those, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. Those in favor of accepting Andrew Stewart as the next new Executive Director of Communications, show by the uplift of hands. And that is vote carries 7-0.
President Odenweller, members of the Board, and Dr. Landry. First, I want to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to serve as the next Executive Director of Communications for Conroe ISD. It has truly been an honor to be a part of this district for the past eight years and I work and to work alongside so many amazing people. I want to extend a special thank you to Dr. Shelley Winkler for showing me that Conroe ISD was where I needed to be, to Dr. Sarah Blakelock for her years of dedicated leadership of the Communications Department. To Tally Stout, thank you for your constant support and guidance. To Robert Davison, your tech expertise has been invaluable over the years. And to Celeste Brown, my wonderful team has kept me grounded and on track over the years. And to my family, Mandy, my wife, thank you for your unwavering love and support. You're my biggest cheerleader, best friend, and your worth is truly far above jewels. I love you. To my daughters, Ainsley and Addison, thank you for your love and patience even when I do not deserve it. To my mom, thank you for always pushing me to do my best and believing in me. Before I express my final thanks, I just want to say how incredibly excited I am to begin this new chapter. Dr. Landry, I am deeply honored that you have placed your trust in me to lead the very talented Communications Department in order to tell this tremendous, sorry, the tremendous and worthy story of Conroe ISD. Under your leadership, Conroe ISD will continue to be known as the premier school district in Texas. Finally, to my dad, who was both a communications officer in the Air Force and the Director of Communications for the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Thank you for being the absolute best granddad to my girls, a Christian leader to my family, and your advice and guidance in helping me become the man I am today. Although I took a very different path from you, with me being in the superior Navy and you in the Air Force, and your work with TDCJ and mine in education, it has not escaped me that our journeys were very similar. That is because I've been chasing my hero all these years. Thank you, and I love you.
No, I'm teasing with you. I just want to say he got the joke on you this time. So, anyway, thank you very much. We look forward to working with you and your team. You've got a really outstanding team, and we're very thankful as a board for them. All right. Moving on to our next item, it is now 4:08. The Board will now adjourn into closed session to consider Item 3A under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074. No action or votes will be taken in closed session. It is now 6:23, and we are now back in session. No final action was taken in closed session. We will now proceed with the rest of the agenda. Okay, and there's, since there's no action, we'll go on to citizen participation. Per Board Policy BED and Texas Government Code Section 551.007, any citizen who has signed up may address the Board regarding only topics for items posted on tonight's agenda. If a citizen has signed up to speak on any matter other than today's posted agenda items, he or she is welcome to make comments to the Board at the Board's regular meeting scheduled for August 19th, when the Board hears comments about both posted agenda items and non-agenda items. Each speaker will be given two minutes to present their comments to the Board. Screens around the room will display this speaker's time. When the countdown timer reaches zero, the next speaker will be called. Ms. Spurlock, please call our first speaker.
Destiny Milton? Seeing that today's meeting is to discuss the upcoming budget and proposed tax rates, I wanted to talk about financial transparency. Let's start with a simple number, $25,000. $25,000 is what this Board has spent on outside legal representation for the months of March, April, and May. You are currently on track to spend over $100,000 of taxpayers' money on services that were previously covered by the Conroe ISD Legal Department. Our district is being charged for every email your lawyer sends, all FOIA requests that mention the Board, and every single private call you make to your representation, Jackson Hewitt, during your closed meetings. This is money that should be going to our kids, our teachers, and our staff. This spending is careless and wasteful. In March, Missy was granted sole authority to hire outside legal representation for this Board. She signed a contract with Tim Davis from Dallas, which brings me to question Missy's ethics, integrity, and competency. Because not only did she not share the agreement that she signed with the rest of the Board immediately, she chose a lawyer who was previously entangled in scandal with Keller ISD when he advised their Board members to break the Texas Open Meetings Act. In addition to Davis's questionable history, he also charges $500 an hour. This is almost double what comparable Texas law firms charge for the exact same services. Board members have requested that Missy cancel this and other contracts like TEE, yet our Board President refuses to add this to any upcoming agendas. So, since you will not listen to them, I am here today as a concerned parent, former teacher, and a concerned community member, and I demand that this item be immediately put on an agenda. The terms of the client agreement that I have here in invoices should be shared with the community, reevaluated, and terminated. You will not hold our district hostage any longer. The community is going to be, not going to be left holding the bill for you questioning the legality of your questionable policy. And if y'all want to see it, it's right here.
Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Consent Agenda. There was one correction to the minutes which we were all notified on, and I have looked at those corrected amendments. Is, or do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the correction that we were given?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, show, oh, is there any discussion or anything that we need to, okay. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. And the motion carries 7-0. Moving on to our next item, Item 8, Administration, Discussion, and Potential Action to Name the Conroe Virtual School. Dr. Landry, your department, I mean, your team has brought this forward. Would you please inform?
We have. So, this is, you know, an item that we've been discussing for a while, and we've had some public participation requesting that we finalize the naming of the Conroe Virtual School. So, we have presented you with a couple of options there for your discussion.
And Trustee May, you asked at the last meeting for us to put this on. Would you like to start any discussion that we have?
Well, I'm grateful that we've put this on and moving forward with developing the Conroe Virtual School. Since the bill is passed, and I look forward to this school really developing in the future, and I think it is such a unique opportunity for a lot of students in our district, especially considering ESAs that have passed. So, I think the more we can do boutique-style learning like this. So, I would like to make a motion. Yes, or go ahead.
Let me finish with it and then bring your motion. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, well, I, oops, sorry, my mic was off. I would like for us to consider, there were a couple of names brought forward, and one of the ones that I was concerned about naming it, the Conroe, naming it Conroe Virtual School, but I like the idea that we incorporate "the" like we have with the Woodlands High School, the College Park, and it could be, and we heard from people before in previous meetings, the Conroe Virtual School, TCVS, as an option. So, that's one that I would like to throw out there.
I like TCVS also. I'm a little bit worried about it being called CVS because people going to a pharmacy. So, yeah, I think the "T" helps, and it also aligns it with the other schools.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Any other thought? Okay. Do you have? Anything? Ms. May?
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we name the virtual school "The Conroe Virtual School."
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. All right, and the motion carries 7-0. I would, I'm just going to state, could we get the Communications Department starting to work on branding for it now?
That's, those are the next steps, is we're going to look at, you know, branding and mascots and school colors. And so, we're getting right on that immediately.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 9. We will now open the public hearing to discuss the proposed budget and proposed tax rate for the upcoming 2025-2026 school year. The public hearing is required by the Texas Education Code and the Texas Tax Code to allow members of the public on, and, public an opportunity to comment on the proposed budget and tax rate before the Board takes action. And we are now going to go to Dr. Landry. Are you ready to move forward with the public hearing?
Yes, we are.
Good evening, President Odenweller, members of the Board, Dr. Landry, and community members. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to provide information regarding the 25-26 proposed budget and tax rate. It has been an eventful budget season, as is typical in a legislative year. These are some of the challenges that we were facing coming into this budget season earlier this spring. As with any legislative year, that always brings challenges as we're trying to project revenue for the upcoming year as bills are making their way through the process in the legislature. We were working our way out of a deficit budget. There was no funding mechanism in the current formula as it existed to provide raises for employees or address inflation. And then, as always, supporting our growing special education population is continues to be a challenge. And then, the unknown impact of possible savings accounts, education savings accounts. Sorry. So, for the most part, the legislature did make some meaningful progress towards addressing many of our funding challenges, although some not to the extent that we had hoped. But we are continuing to work on that, and we will look for future growth in some of those areas. One of the, one of the areas that we were most, I guess, disappointed with was the special education funding that we received. It did help to close the gap somewhat, but certainly not to the extent that we had hoped. But we will look for future sessions to possibly see some additional funding in that area. And as I said, we are thankful for any funding that is coming our way out of this legislative session. Eighty-ninth session recap, the 140-day session ended on June 2nd. There were over 9,000 bills that were filed. The governor's last day to sign bills was June 22nd of 2025. Some of the major initiatives that we saw this year that impacted school funding was, of course, teacher compensation and school finance bill. Property tax cuts continues to be a concentration of the legislature, and then education savings accounts. So, kind of a 90-foot view of the House Bill 2, which is the major school finance bill that came out of this session. An additional $8.5 billion was allocated to school districts across the state as a result of House Bill 2. $4.2 billion of that was allocated specifically for salary increases for teachers and support staff. $2.6 billion to address funding gaps related to special education, school safety, and then a new allotment for basic costs was created to address some of the inflationary challenges that districts were facing resulting from increased costs for utilities, procuring supplies, all the things that come along with inflation. And then, some targeted program adjustments, $1.7 billion for CTE, teacher prep, and early learning. Property tax relief continues to be a major priority for the legislature. They allocated nearly $51 billion of this budget for the biennium to continue commitment to property tax relief that was enacted in previous sessions, and then to provide new relief. There are two Senate bills that passed that are both pending constitutional amendment that will make changes to the homestead exemption. The first one is Senate Bill 4, that would increase the homestead exemption for homeowners from 100,000 to 140,000 at a cost of $2.7 billion. Senate Bill 23 is for our over 65 residents. That would increase that homestead exemption to 10, from 10,000 to 60,000 at a cost of $1.2 billion. The district will be held harmless for any loss in local revenue as a result of these increased exemptions, and both of those are going to require constitutional amendment, and will go to the voters in November, and we do anticipate that those will pass. So, this is an overview of what we're estimating House Bill 2 to generate in terms of additional funding for Conroe ISD, $41 million estimated. We saw somewhat of a change in philosophy in how the state allocated funding this year. They used a much more targeted approach and created several new allotments that were specifically designed to send costs to specific areas. And you can see here, the ones with the asterisks are the new allotments that were created, and of course, teacher retention allotment being the largest one that makes up the $41 million. $19.6 million of that 41 is designated specifically for providing raises for teachers. As we know, that was a huge priority this year for the legislature. And then, they also recreated a staff support retention allotment to provide raises for other employees. Then you can see the other categories there. We did see a slight increase in the basic allotment of $55 that generates about $5 million in additional funding for us. So, estimated increase, $41 million just as a result of House Bill 2 changes this year. So, significant funding coming our way, and we are thankful for the legislature for what they did in terms of funding. So, budget assumptions moving into 25-26, we are using projected enrollment of 73,500 students, our average daily attendance percentage at 93%. We did receive certified values from the property tax division in July, and our value is at $56.5 billion. That's a slight growth at 1.87%. And then, our proposed tax rate will remain the same at .9496. So, this is just a 10-year history of our enrollment and attendance data. I'll draw your attention to the bottom row, that is our 25-26, projected enrollment and attendance. We are using 73,500 students. At 93%, enrollment would generate ADA of 68,355. Our special education student count, just wanted to share this to show the tremendous growth that we have continued to see in our special education department over the last several years. Over 2,000 students joined that program in '24, '25, 22% increase in students, and you'll see the priority that was given in terms of staffing to support this growing population of students later on in the presentation. Our tax rate history over the last five years, we are projecting no change in the tax rate for next year. .9496 will be our proposed tax rate. This is a breakdown between the maintenance and operations tax rate and the debt service tax rate for next year, .6696 for maintenance and operations, and 28 cents for debt service. So, our overall projected revenue increase for next year, that local property tax revenue increase of 1.87 will generate roughly $6.7 million in additional revenue. Our House Bill 2 increase of $41 million. Other state funding increases for hold harmless and student growth, $9.78 million. Our teacher incentive allotment program continues to grow. This is essentially a pass-through as this revenue is passed on to the teachers that earn designations. Through that program, we're adding an additional $1 million for revenue for that program. And then, we're starting to see a slight decline in interest earnings. We're going to remove $1.5 million in interest revenue from the budget. And then, TRS on behalf is another pass-through item on our budget. We are required to record an entry to record the state's contribution to the TRS program at $4 million. So, total estimated revenue increase for next year of $60.98 million. This is our approved teacher hiring schedule for next year. This was approved at the July regular Board meeting. We are very excited about this. Starting teacher pay, $63,500. And then, this is our approved compensation plan for '25-26 that was also approved at the July Board meeting. Teacher pay scale, starting pay 63.5. Average teacher increase for all years of experience, 6%. For teachers with five or more years of experience, the average increase was a roughly 8.2% at a cost of $21.49 million. Administrative support, instructional support, and auxiliary will receive a 6% increase on the midpoint. Police and technology, 4%. And then, our administrative business and administrative education staff, 3.5. For a total cost increase of $33.1 million. Some of this was supported by those two new allotments that were created by the state, the teacher retention allotment at 19.6, and then the staff support allotment at 2.7. This is our proposed personnel changes. As I mentioned earlier, our special education population continues to grow. We are recommending additional staff of 142.75 FTEs for next year. 95 of those are special education positions to support that growing population at a cost $8 million total. $5 million of that is special education. Our projected expenditure increase for next year, that additional personnel for growth of $8.07 million. That employee raise that we just talked about, $33.1 million. A slight increase in substitute pay at .38 million. An adjustment to summer school of .5 million. And then, this is the offset of our teacher incentive allotment increase on the revenue side. Software costs and other expenses such as utilities, fuel, and insurance. And then, the offset to our TRS on behalf brings our total estimated expenditure increase of $49.08 million. So, putting this all together, our beginning revenue for next year, $700.07 million. With those additional revenue amounts, 60.98 brings our total estimated revenue to $761.05 million. On the expenditure side, beginning expenditures, $700, 11.97 million. Additions of 49.08 brings our expenditure estimate at $761.05 to present a balanced budget. This is the format that we will ask the Board to adopt the budget at the August 19th meeting for the General Fund, the Child Nutrition Fund, and the Debt Service Fund. And then, this is just our budget by major object. Payroll, 89.3%. Contracted services, 34.3 million. Supplies and materials, 31.8. And then, equipment and other, 15.4 million for total combined expenditures of just over $761 million. So, what's next? We will have another public hearing on the 19th, and then at the Board meeting, we will ask the Board to adopt the budget and the tax rate for 2025-2026.
At this time, we invite members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed budget or tax rate to come forward. Seeing no further speakers, we will close the public hearing. The public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rate is now closed. The time is 6:42. The Board meeting will now proceed with the regular agenda. Dr. Landry, at this time, before we start the item number 10, this would be a great time for you to introduce our newest member at the other end of the dais.
Madam President, thank you very much. Yeah, it is my, it's my pleasure to be able to introduce, you know, we have, since the retirement of our general counsel, we've, we've been looking for a solution to that, and we think we have at this point. We've contracted with a law firm, O'Handlon, DeMarith, and Castillo. Mr. Kevin O'Handlon is in the audience today as the founding partner in that firm, and they have over 40 years of exemplary Texas public school law history. And we think we're very confident that they will be able to provide us the legal representation and trusted legal representation that we need. Sitting on the dais with us is a partner in that firm, Mrs. Cara Baloo, who will be representing them on our behalf and probably see her around at the Board meetings, and they will be, you know, available to us for consultation when needed.
Thank you. So, just to be clear, right now, we're just using them until we make a decision regarding general counsel, and then we'll, and right now, we're about to actually address a possible, to consider and possibly adopt revision to the Board policy local, so.
That is, that's correct.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in our discussions regarding our hiring of general counsel for the district, we determined that our current policy didn't provide us with any flexibility on what we might need and want to do as a Board regarding our representation. So, would you like to share your recommendation?
Certainly. So, it is the current policy BDD, which we have called for a very specific course of action in regards to our general counsel. So, it is our recommendation that we amend that policy at this time so that it does give us the flexibility to find the best legal representation that we can for our students of the school district.
Any discussion? Does, do any of you have any questions, want to clarify anything? All right. Then, do I have a motion to accept the revision to the Board poli, oh, we're not motioning, sorry. It'll come up next meeting. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, seeing no further discussion, we will move on to our next item, which is Agenda Item Number 10, and that is to consider and possibly adopt revision to the Board policy CH local. One of the things that has come up since we put our agenda out is that we have a policy that's coming forward at the next agenda, I mean, at the next meeting, Dr. Landry, and so it involves language that could conflict with this language in CH. So, I'd like to ask that we table this CH- So I'd like to ask that we table this CH policy discussion and revision until next meeting on August 19th, where we can see it and make sure we're in alignment so we don't pass one policy or have a potential passing of a policy at the next meeting that's in contradiction to new legislation. Are you good with that?
Certainly, absolutely.
Okay. All right, moving on to Item 11, Legal Item EMI. This is also another one that we will, I would recommend that we wait on and table until the next meeting. There's a hearing going on on August 15th that we probably ought to hear what's happening there before we start making changes on our end, so I'm going to ask that we table that item also.
No, I agree wholeheartedly on that one.
That was Legal 10.
Yes, Legal...
You said 11.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, Legal 10, I'm so sorry.
No problem.
All right. So, moving on to our... I'm looking for that piece of paper is what happened. Did it get stuck with something else? Because I am looking for the language that we need for going into closed session. Well, I apologize for this. I think that when I move things around, that I misplaced that piece. So let me turn. This is a prime opportunity for us to use Ms. Baloo to make sure I read the right.
She's already working hard over there. I hate her.
Yes. So I apologize for that, everyone. I had it right here, but sometimes pages stick together, so... We're going into closed session.
We're going into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, 551.072, 551.074.
Thank you. All right, we are going into closed session. The time is 6:47 in pursuant to Codes 551.074, 551.074, and 551.074, Items A, B, C, and D. And like I said, the time is 6:47. The time is 9:42, and we are now back in open session. No final action was taken in closed session. We will now proceed with the rest of the agenda. Are there any future board agenda items to be added to the next agenda? The deadline is tomorrow. Okay. Seeing none, then there being no further business before the board, I declare this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees adjourned. The time is 9:42.